Do you have under this, do you have anything more than just a list?
Yeah, I have.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna open the regular meeting again, and we're gonna do so with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could stand and join us, please. Join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. Thank you all. Okay. So, we got one item, public comments, which is next, but before we get to public comments, I want to just let everybody here and everybody in town know that at about 5:00 this afternoon, I received an email from Joel Kahn, who is the representative developer of Powder Mill Place, asking me to give him a call when I got a chance. Knowing that Powder Mill Place was on our agenda this evening, I called Mr. Kahn, and Mr. Kahn has informed me that Powder Mill Place will be contracting with the town of Acton for both sewer and water for their project on Powder Mill Road. So sewer and water from Maynard to the project is off the table and no longer needs to be discussed. So, public comments. Yes, sir?
I'd like to ask a question to that comment that you just made. Has he put that writing somewhere?
Nope. I had, I-
I would suggest you get better than just a-
Yeah, okay.
Somebody tells you they're gonna do it because as many slip, puts a cup on the lip.
Okay, okay.
These guys-
The other part of the, the other-
They're in the eye and they know the game.
Yeah, the other, the other part of the discussion, the other part of the discussion that he had with me was that this was voted on and approved at last night's Acton Selectman meeting. So, so-
Still doesn't hold, hold water.
I know Vic, I don't need to, I don't need-
Half the time the writing, half the time the writing-
Thank you Vic, thank you Vic, thank you Vic.
Okay.
Point well taken. Anybody else with public comments? Again, yes, I've missed you!
Well, there you go.
All right.
I would like to make a comment about last Saturday, I guess it was, you had the October test, which I understand was a great success.
Okay.
The weather was perfect. The other thing I would like to say is that- The other thing I would like to-
Like to say is that if you take a trip, take a walking trip in our downtown area, why the merchants on up here dancing on your desk is beyond me. You've got dead and dying trees. You've got streets in the downtown area that are horrible condition. And it would seem to me as though somebody should take a little action because I counted, I think it was either five or six dead trees, and many that need work done to keep them from dying further. And also, if you look at Nation Street on a Sunday morning, it almost looks like a plowed field with the "thank you ma'ams." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With the what? What was the last-
Almost looks like a plowed field with what?
The plowed field with what?
Thank you ma'ams.
What was the last thing you said?
Plowed field with what? Thank you ma'ams?
Don't you know what a thank you ma'am is?
No, sir, no, sir! No, sir, I do not know! But I want you to tell me!
It's an old fun as a thing, you know, you get a little dip in the road-
Oh, okay, road, okay, yeah.
-you got these speed bumps-
Trough, like a trough.
If you live long enough, or you were old enough, you could classify those as thank you ma'ams.
I will bring the tree issue to the attention of the tree warden, and I will bring the other issue to whoever needs to brought to their attention as well.
Is that in the urban dictionary that I've been looking at all week?
If the dead trees were taken down before winter, it would be a great help for snow removal.
Yes, sir. How do I abbreviate that to text it?
Aren't you glad I came?
See why I'm-
You know what? I want to say publicly, I'm very glad to see and I'm happy you came back to see us, regardless of what anyone else might think.
Try to be constructive.
Yes, sir, you always are. Anybody else have a public comment they'd like to make tonight? Okay. We have some minutes to accept, and the minutes are from the meeting of September 18th, 2018, and I make a motion that we move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of September 18th, 2018, as presented. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Anyone have any conversation about the minutes of the 18th of September?
Nope.
All those in favor? We'll have a, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Our correspondences, we have three this evening, and make a motion, we move to accept the three correspondence items as presented. Do you have a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions about those three items?
Yeah, to the point that Becky had raised earlier. What is, for the resignation of the Regional Vocational School Committee member, what is the charter protocol relative to replacing that person so that Maynard has representation on the Regional School Committee?
You want the charter information?
No, whether or not, how it, how it is covered. Is there, is there a special election? Is it a vote of the Board of Selectmen?
It's a joint-
It's similar to what happened over the summer with the school committee opening. The only difference is the, with a, with a Maynard School Committee, the board can act after 30 days unilaterally.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, there's no provision for that. So the appointment will be joint between the Maynard Public School Committee and the Mayor Board of Selectmen. But the posting of this for at least a week, all that kind of stuff follows identically to that other process.
Okay. But it does include the Maynard School Committee as part of the joint selection process?
They are the joint selection process.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? No? All right. All those in favor of the correspondence items? Thank you. On the consent agenda, there are four items on the consent agenda, and I make a motion, we move to accept and approve the four consent items as shown, A through D. Do you have a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions about the four items on the consent agenda? I believe- That, well, two of them are, two of them are repeat issues to Jingle All the Way and the election questions we always do. But-
I, I actually have a couple of questions about the Jingle All the Way.
Okay.
Because I think, because this is my first. This is my first review.
Okay.
Adam is here from Jingle All the Way.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good, thank you. I was wondering if you, do you know the route yet?
Yes. So last year, we actually had a two-mile route and a 5K route. And unless any changes from, from the police department, which I haven't heard yet, we were gonna keep those the same.
Okay.
I actually have them here if you'd like to review.
Okay, so in there, so does that affect the downtown businesses? It goes outside?
That is correct.
Fantastic.
So it goes, it goes outside the downtown?
That is correct.
Very good. That was actually my own question.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Sarah Donnelly here.
Yes, she is.
All right, oh, yeah, okay. Okay, Sarah, we're gonna grill you about your interview for the Cooler School Working Group.
Okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion, then we'll ask you any questions we have, and then we'll vote.
Okay.
The motion is we move to accept and approve Sarah Donnelly to the Cooler School Working Group with a term expiring on December 30th, 2019. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, questions for Sarah? After all that, someone would be to ask her some questions.
No, I don't have one.
Yes. Sarah, thank you first off for-
Sure.
-coming forward on, on this. I see you live on Parker Street, presumably right in the area-
I do, I'm across the street.
Okay. What are some of your thoughts about the building and, you know, I assume, and if you haven't, it's okay-
Yeah.
I'm not gonna vote against you. I assume you've read the preliminary report that was written by the-
I have, yes, yeah.
What, what are your takeaways? What do you think?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what I think yet. I mean, I think, I would like there to be some type of value for the community in whatever ends up happening there, whether it is aesthetic or an actual, you know, function for the community. I think it needs to be weighed with what it can, how Maynard can benefit from whatever ends up there, whether it is a community building or a revenue type situation. I don't really know exactly where I'd land on that yet, but I want it to benefit both the neighbors, the community as a whole, and obviously be good for Maynard too.
Do you have children?
I don't want it to just sit there vacant.
Do you have children?
Um, I do, yes.
And do they sled, sled on the hill?
They do sled on that hill.
I'm sure they love that.
Every winter, every day, pretty much, except for snow.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else?
Actually, so you've, you've gone to the meetings? Did you go to the couple?
I've gone to the last two meetings. I, if I'm not mistaken, I think there was only one, the very first one that I wasn't at.
I appreciate you going to the meetings even though you hadn't-
Oh, yeah.
-gotten on board yet.
Sure.
So, thank you.
They may have elected you chair before you even-
All right.
Is that it?
So I guess that's it for questions. So all those in favor of the appointment? And we thank you very much for volunteering.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thanks so much, nice night.
Thank you.
Bye, Sarah.
Have fun, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have appointments of five different people to the ADA Commission. I will read the mo-, excuse me, the motion, which is, includes all five. We'll do them individually, Becky.
That's the way that-
Yeah, they're, they're individually-
We'll do them individually, that's fine.
Tim Goulding is not present tonight, but the other four appointees are here.
Tim Goulding is the Assistant Facilities Manager for the town, so let's do his first because it's first in order. And I move to accept and approve the Assistant Facilities Manager, Tim Goulding, to the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission with a term that expires on June 30th, 2021. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay. Second is Denise Shay, and I move to accept and approve Denise Shay to Americans with Disabilities Act Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2020. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Denise, I believe, is here.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Denise? If there are no questions for Denise, we'll vote. All those in favor? Thank you, Denise. The next person is Suzie Coughlin, and the motion is move to accept and approve Suzie Coughlin to the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2020. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Warman. Do we have any questions for Suzie?
Where is Suzie?
I'm here, it's Coughlin, not-
Coughlin? I apologize for mispronunciation of your name. Sarah Coughlin.
Suzie.
Suzie Coughlin, geez.
I'm having a problem, okay. Vic has me all thrown off, he's here tonight, so excited, but, okay, so Suzie Coughlin, all those in favor of her appointment to the commission? Thank you very much for volunteering. Next up is Elijah Tucker, and I move to accept and approve-
Welcome.
Elijah Tucker to the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission with a term to expire on June 30th, 2019. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any questions for Elijah? No questions? All those in favor of the appointment? Thank you, Elijah. And finally, last but not least, I move to accept and approve Brian Burghaus to the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2019. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment, just that, and not for you, Brian, for the whole group and just in general. This is a committee that we had in, in full force back several years ago, and it, it sort of fell apart for various reasons. But I think it's an extremely important committee and plays a huge role, especially as we begin our master planning process and other similar type activities because oftentimes, I think, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The, the accessibility of our roads, the accessibility of crosswalks, the accessibility of buildings, the accessibility of lots of different places are not necessarily recognized by the able-bodied, you know, traditional able-bodied individuals. And it becomes more evident as you walk around town and you see, you know, some of the sidewalks that we've got. And it's not, not anything against the, you know, the town's efforts, because the efforts are there. It's just that the more that people that are able to recognize these things, see it and can report it to us, the better off we'll all be. The same goes true for anything that this committee might, might review. You know, just at our last meeting, and it had nothing to do with the ADA Commission, but it, it does because I, I try to walk around town as much as I possibly can, and I, I was down on Main Street towards the Walgreens Building, for lack of a better name, and the sidewalk there is basically ripped up at where the handicap ramp goes down. The other side was last year, or two years ago, and it was repaired, and it's, it's fine. But I recognized that if I had a cane, if I had a wheelchair, if I had any type of mobile inability, that I might not be able to traverse past that location because I might get stuck, and it's not fair and it's not right, and so-
I live on Main Street, and when I come into town, my wheelchair, I have to be in the road for most of it because the sidewalk's so bad.
Yeah. And another thing that had been brought up, another location, we fixed it, it's, but that little alleyway that goes next to where the Brooke Restaurant was, down towards the Mexican Restaurant at the bottom, that used to be only accessible for people in the road. Because there's no, and that's able-bodied and everybody in the road. Similarly, in the wintertime, you see elderly, which is also a, you know, an issue of ability to, to get around, struggling to get up that hill, also over towards the, the bank over on that side of the, of the basin where it goes straight up. So this committee is really, really important, and I hope that, you know, you take the role seriously and, and really address some of the issues and let us know. We're not gonna be able to fix everything in a week, not even in a couple of years, but we'll be able to set up a plan, and I think Aaron will probably be involved in that as part of his role, looking especially at accessibility of the streets. But thank you all very much.
Yep. So thank you all, and-
I don't think, did we actually vote on that one?
Did we vote?
No, we didn't vote. We'll vote for the last one.
All right, so all those in favor of Brian's appointment? Thank you. Again, thank you all for volunteering.
And your appointment slips will be in the town clerk's office tomorrow morning, so you can stop in at any given time to be sworn in for duty.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Number nine? Number nine is, motion, we move to approve the contract for Veterans Union Way Park improvements to Cali Corporation. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any conversation about it?
Is that something that started?
Yeah, it did. Didn't start, they started already.
They started on the, the bandstand.
The plant stand, yeah. And also behind the band, they're working behind it.
Is that the contractor that's-
So, yeah, it was downtown, the bandstand, the school of the projects, a bandstand and a accessible ramp on the side of the park leading from sidewalk near Citizens Bank driveway down to the parking lot level. We had to start, they were given a, a contract author, an order to proceed, an award letter due to the, the timeframe. We're running out of, the construction season's coming to a close here in the next couple of months, so in order to get it done by the end of the construction season, we need to give them the, the notice to proceed ahead of the, the contract being finally executed. So they assume the kind of the risk on that.
They have like a December 1st deadline, I think, or something like that.
Correct, yeah, so they have one month to complete the bandstand, and then another month to complete the, the ramp system.
Okay.
Is there concessions if for some reason they don't, if they don't finish it by December 1st, or if it's rushed through and it's not fabulous, do we have concessions to go back next year to like-
Yeah, so we can, so they're obligated to, to meet the contract. There are, you know, if there's, you know, if we have some early winter storms or there's some adverse reasons, we can give them a contract extension. You know, the town's protected that if, you know, they were to fail to complete the job because of negligence on their part, that we would still be made whole, but.
Okay. Anybody else with questions? No? All those in favor? Thank you. Recreation Commission exemption. Move to allow the Recre-, the motion is that we move to allow the Recreation Commission to hire a commission member to manage the 2018-2019 youth basketball program. Do you have a second?
It was a part-time, right, or is that the-
Yeah, it's part-time, yeah.
Second.
Okay. All right.
How you doing? I'm Steve Jones from the Rec Commission, David Roach also from the Rec Commission. So in July, the Boys and Girls Club told us they were no longer interested in running the basket, the recreation basketball program, which is grades three through eight. August, we got permission from you guys in order to hire somebody. September, we listed it, we got one candidate. They declined the offer after the interview. So now we are at the point where in order to have a basketball program this season, we have a very good candidate that is already on the Rec Board, and we want to hire her to take that position this year to, to get us through this year. She is the girls' middle school basketball coach. She's involved in the basketball program and has for several years, and kind of knows all the cast characters, the things that are going on, and thinks she'd be very effective in that role.
So how does this work?
So the issue at hand is that a member of a committee like this is not supposed to be hired to work for the committee.
Right.
Technically, they work for the town and so on. But given the timing of this, this is not the intention when they asked for permission to hire, as Steve Jones just laid out for us. This is sort of a emergency, and with the Board of Selectmen's endorsement, we'd be allowed to, allow this to happen until either we find an appropriate individual or for the remainder of the season. It wouldn't be considered permanent.
So would, would she recuse herself from the commission in the meantime, or would she still be a member of the commission and work at the same time, or how does that-
She can still be a member of the commission, but she shouldn't be voting on things that affect this particular program. And I think you may recall from the August presentation, they're hoping that this becomes sort of a sustainable position that does more than just youth basketball.
Right.
And this was gonna be sort of a little bit of piloting it, and that's why I'm suggesting that we don't intend this to be permanent, that we still plan to move that model, but not necessarily with this person.
Andrew, I see in the, excuse me, in the public content of our packet that we were waiting on Lisa's, Lisa Mead's input. Did she ever weigh in and send anything along? Is that what's summarized in here, or is there anything else that we're waiting on that might be a glitch down the road?
No, that's correct. The, it really is, we certainly shouldn't be making this a habit, right? There's a provision in Massachusetts law, particularly for small communities, where we declare people special employees. Some of that's outlined in the public content section there. For those of you looking at electronically, it's in blue, some of the things that specifically apply to this case. So it is allowed, it happens a lot in small communities in the Commonwealth, but it's something that you want to take the measure of, and that's why the board has to approve it, and we just can't sort of enact it on our own. Because the board, because the commission took the time, they advertised, they interviewed, you know, they, if they had done none of that, this would be one of those instances where we might say, you're just trying to, you know, do somebody a favor here. By having done all that due diligence, we think we've demonstrated that that's not the case.
Okay.
I know I've had other, I've had conversations with other members of the commission who've also, when they were trying to put it together, their, their whole point was that nobody on the commission really wanted it. They were trying to find somebody, so I do know that was the case.
Yeah, I think that's the comment that, that Jim Hines made when he was here.
There's a lot of work involved in running the basketball program. As a volunteer board, it would be pretty impossible for, for us to be able to pull it off.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Okay. Any questions about this?
So you're just expecting this will be just a one-year deal?
One season, I hope for next year.
Seasonal probably, in order to-
Yeah, well, it's, it certainly is, but for next year's basketball program, we won't be here doing the same thing to a point.
We will be advertising and looking for the best candidate.
And nothing's changed, you expect, based on at least, I don't know if you've even started getting kids because you don't have a leader.
We have a coaches meeting tomorrow night, so that begins the run-up.
So you're not-
And we're a little behind. If you look around town, it still already has, is up, I saw it over in Acton, so we have to really-
My concern's on the financing, that we make sure that we get enough money to fund it.
So that, you know, our, our big deal with the Boys and Girls Club is they never really had a handle on the finances and how much it actually costs. So some of it is, we now feel like we, they've been very good at giving us all of that information, and we feel like we're gonna price it at what it costs us, and, and we'll be able to make it self-sustaining.
Very good. Excellent.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor? Thank you, all right.
Thank you.
Nice. Good luck. Have fun. Good season. Good luck, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you. So next up is setting the dates for the public hearings for both Comcast and Verizon contracts. And there's two motions. I'll read the first one, is it move to accept and set the date for the public hearing for Comcast contract at 8:30 PM on Wednesday, November 7th, 2018. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any conversation about it? These are common. All right. All those in favor? So we have that to look forward to on November 7th. Second one is move to accept and set the date for the public hearing for the Verizon contract at 7:15 PM on Wednesday, November 7th, 2018. Do you have a second for that motion?
Second.
Anybody have any comments about the Verizon contract? All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Moving right along.
So we didn't just vote on accepting the contract, correct? We voted to have the hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's when the hearing is-
Just wanna make sure, hold on.
My Verizon bill, I, I have some questions, I might have to take the floor on my Verizon bill.
The contract doesn't set the rates.
All right, so continuance of the water and sewer abatement for one for the court. Where's Mr., is Aaron a part of this discussion?
Yeah, he'll be right back.
Just kicked him out of the room for a minute.
So if, as an acquisition officer in the Air Force, I recommend a new lecturn for speakers, so we can rest our paper on that, but that's beside the point. So just to, can we pass Ari on? Can you hand me another one of those ledgers? It seemed to, yeah, sorry. So just as a reminder to the Board and as a refresher, we, we met two weeks ago discussing potentially forgiving the interest on this account, so this is a two-sided piece of paper. This goes, this is a ledger of our bills and payments, as well as the interests from October of, or from April of 2010, all the way until the abatement request was filed in February of this year. So if you look at the bottom of this bill, or on the second page, rather, the total bills were $50,920.39, and the payments in response to that, that we've made over the course of that period are $50,422. And so if you look at the accrued interest over that period of time, it was $1,712.12, with the total outstanding balance at $2,198. Now, that current bill sits at about $1,400 now, because we continue to pay that down. But I did, the question from two weeks ago was this $1,700, or the, the amount of the interest, what did that stand at? And so I did want to provide that to the Board and look for your input on that.
At the last meeting, we were talking about interest, interest amounts basically much, much smaller than this.
No, I mentioned prior, I don't know if the minutes will reflect this, but the video would, that it was around $1,600, and as I looked back at the amounts, it was $1,700. And I met with the head of the Department of Public Works yesterday to ensure that he had reviewed it, that the, that the numbers were correct, and he did respond that they were. So.
I think he's, Chris is looking at his notes from last meeting.
I don't have, I don't have those numbers in these notes, but Becky, do you, are the notes, are those amounts in the minutes at all? That we just approved?
We just approved them.
Yeah.
I don't think we were. I recall seeing them in the notes, the minutes.
I'm not sure.
No, the numbers weren't.
Not the number, number wasn't in the minutes.
All right, so I just, I just recall that the numbers we discussed last week were significantly smaller than $1,600, $1,700, all some of that. Adam, so where are we, Aaron, with the item number one? Meter hookup issues?
Sorry, say again?
The meter hookup issues?
So we weren't able to inspect the basement yet.
Okay.
There was, I believe the residents were out of town last week. We did meet yesterday and notified them that we would be able to make an appointment to take it out there and look at the basement.
Yep.
When, when they have some time, they just have to call and schedule it with the, with the office.
Okay.
And I believe that the original abatement on the interest portion had requested an abatement of $1,701.36.
Yeah, so it was off by, there, there was a minor miscalculation, but the spirit of the amount is about the same. It's actually lower now than we'd initially requested.
So what, so the, so if I get the timeline right?
Mm-hmm.
Was it 24, who didn't pay the bills? Was it Mark Marullo or Derek Vandergrift?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so if you look at the right column under where it says running balance, that's the overall running balance of the debt of the association.
Okay, so it was Mark Marullo?
So you can see Mark Marullo built that debt up to about $2,229.
Yep.
And over the course, Derek Vandergrift tried to address that, was not able to really. And I believe the reason that Mark Marullo gave Derek Vandergrift when he moved was that the town had failed to bill HOA, but the numbers show that that is not correct. Then moving to when Derek Vandergrift left, you'll, you'll notice that the, the bills were paid in full, with the exception of the interest from then on. And that's, that's how we end up here, the current amount.
So what, why didn't you file for an abatement back when you figured out, when they, why didn't they, I guess, why didn't they file for an abatement? Because that's the thing.
It's a good question.
Because that's when the rule, that's the rule, right? Is it the, it's supposed to be within 60 days of, of the issue, is that?
So we were not aware of the issue. According to Lily Shwan Rosenwald and Derek Vandergrift, that what had been intimated to them, they did not investigate further, was that the town had failed to bill, and that there was some sort of, this is how we found out, and this was a few months prior to actually digging and coming and meeting with the town and looking at the billing history, that the town had failed to bill and they had some sort of agreement, but that, you know, that doesn't pass muster when you look at it. So when we finally discovered this in February, this is when we came and alerted the town to the problem, and we've also started to, to pay down our balance.
I don't have any questions. I, I'm a bit concerned about what I think is a changed number, and I'm not suggesting that it was done in any, with any ill will, but I'm going to just repeat the comments that I made at the last meeting, where it seems to me that this is not an issue relative for the town to really, and I'm not saying this that I, you know, that I don't care about the residents that live there or whatever.
Yep.
But that there's a legal issue here that's outside of the scope of the town. And I know that you mentioned last time that the guy has, you know, declared bankruptcy and whatever, and he's virtually, you know, verdict-free or whatever. But I don't think that we should be in the, the game of repairing what basically amounts to illegal activity on the part of a treasurer, you know, or, you know, malfeasance at best. Because again, the incentive for other condo associations to do similar things and then just say, well, that was the old treasurer and they, you know, they acted in this way and we can't go after them because they moved to California and, you know, you know, whatever the thing may be. I just don't know if it's a good business practice for us to be in, which is what we are, we are acting as, is, you know, we run the business of the water and sewer department in effect. I said it last week, and I'll say it again, that, that, you know, I'll listen to the arguments from the rest of the Board, but I am not necessarily in favor of giving an abatement on this, just because I don't like the idea of, you know, saying, well, somebody screws up, oh, well, I could come in and say my wife screwed up, you know? She didn't pay the bill, she thought she was paying interest, you know, that type of thing. So I, I must say too, I've spoken to a number of residents who read about this in the paper and whatever and have asked about it, and the majority of the people I've spoken to as well are saying, no, they don't think it's fair that, that situation be abated. So that's where I'm coming down. I do want to say though, I, I thought the argument, you remember the comment that you made about the, the higher level billing is not something I thought about before, where, you know, we have congregate people and, you know, using, especially when you threw the twist in that, you know, this was affordable units. That was impactful to me, and I think it's something that I need, I need to think about how we can go about addressing that, but that's a completely separate issue.
Yeah, so, so I do have comments on that after this, this issue is addressed tonight.
So we're talking about the water bill, and it, you know, you've kind of alluded to the fact that nobody really knew this was out there, this interest due, correct?
Mm-hmm.
It's on every bill you get.
So as I mentioned in the past, we don't receive the bill. That's not, it doesn't come to our apartment, and in the past, Mark Marullo hid the fact that he wasn't paying the bill from the rest of the HOA.
So Mark Marullo's been gone since 2014.
Yep.
Right? Derek Vandergrift has been gone since 2015.
Yep.
And then Lily and Lily Shwan Rosenwald becomes the president on 10/1/2015. So that means she's received 12 or 16 water bills, and on every one, this passed due amount has been there. So to David's point, you know, we're, you're asking us to abate something that you're saying nobody knew about, but it's clearly on every water bill.
So I'm not necessarily saying that no one knew about it. I'm saying that the reason given for the debt was that the town had failed to bill.
Which is.
And that was, which is incorrect, yes, but it was deception on the part of the former.
Again, to David's point, we're not here to referee that type of situation either.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I would suggest we go find, somebody go find Mr. Marullo, Mr. Vandergrift, and Ms. Lily Shwan Rosenwald, and find out what they have to say and collect the money from those three.
Yeah, I would agree with the first two. I don't know about Ms. Shwan Rosenwald, but.
Well, she's the, she's the one that we're kind of pointing the finger at, and she's in charge, you know, so. I don't know, what was, you said you had some comments to make?
I do. I do have some additional exhibits, so my wife Ariana does have those.
What are the additional exhibits?
Hi, I have them.
She has them, she'll, she's passing them out. So.
If this continues and you're going to have exhibits, could you do us a favor and forward them to Becky Mosca at Town Hall, so she can have them to us before we come sit here?
Absolutely. So it's only two tables, so it's not, but we will provide them. So I just wanted to remark on the fact that in our last meeting two weeks ago, what had been intimated to me in the past, that the, the town now required, you know, meters for individual units, and there may have been some sort of misunderstanding, but I do, from that meeting, I got to thinking after the fact, when the head of DPW did mention that a single meter is allowed for larger complexes. So I, I come to inform the Board of issues that will arise if these current policies remain in place. So I ask, as I give this statement, that this doesn't, this not be taken as an affront to the Board or an affront to employees of Maynard, and that you also wait till the end to, to comment or ask questions. And the people that these policies affect the most will likely not bring this issue to the Board. Just want to make that stated. I did some additional research, and I read an article that was published in The Beacon Villager from 19 October 2017, written by Mark Schulert, and it said that one year ago, in October 2017, the Board of Selectmen meant to discuss an increase in water rates and, you know, more, more progressive water rates. So Pioneer Consulting Group recommended the implementation of these increased water rates to address a water fund shortfall of about $114,000, I think, in fiscal year 17. And during that meeting, Mr. Gavin asked if, this is quoting from the article, asked if the rate increases were excessive, especially since they would fall disproportionately on the poor and the elderly. Now Pioneer Consulting Group responded that the more you use, the more you're going to pay, so if they don't use more, they won't pay more. And the former selectman, Terrence Donovan, who I have not met, argued against politicizing the issue with calls for special considerations for specific groups, and this is quoting again. He said, "We shouldn't be giving, gifting water to any demographic in this town, it's not fair. Someone has to pay for it, we all have to pay for it." So I wholeheartedly agree with his statement. But rather than gifting water to specific groups, the town of Maynard has implemented policies that systematically discriminate against renters and low-income families by allowing the use of single meters in multifamily complexes. Now to illustrate this, I want to give you a hypothetical situation.
And this is, now we're into, from the point of Mr. Donovan's comments on, we're into your opinion?
So, what do you?
From the point of Mr. Donovan's comments on, forward, we're into your opinion.
Yes, this is now my opinion, after his, after his quotation, after I said I wholeheartedly agree.
Okay, before we get onto that, I think there was at least two of us in the room for that discussion, and that the spirit of the conversation is not adequately and rarely has adequately been captured by the person who wrote the article, but go ahead.
Okay. So to illustrate this, I'd like to give you a hypothetical situation. Now, let's think about a complex perhaps with 187 units that a developer wants to build in the town. 22 of those units are classified as affordable housing. Now this developer, in order to connect water and sewer, will have to pay $6,000 per unit for a hookup fee. That amounts to about $1.12 million, whether or not each unit has an individual meter or there's a single meter for the entire complex. But the town allows the developer to install a single meter for the entire complex. Now why is this? As the head of DPW stated in a meeting yesterday, as well as in our last meeting two weeks ago, it's easier for the town to manage a single meter rather than 187 separate meters, which is true. The developer saves $150 inspection fee per meter, as well as the cost of the meter, which may, I believe it's around $300 per meter, if that's, if that's true for an individual unit?
You'd have to, you'd have to talk to the people that purchase or sell the meters.
Okay.
High sales.
So that, that amounts to about $84,150. So $84,150. And there are other savings in material costs and labor costs from installing those meters. So who wins in this situation? The developer, who avoids about $84,000 plus additional costs from installing these, these additional meters. The town also wins, because the town only manages one single meter for a large complex and collects windfall revenues off water use in the highest tier, if you look at Exhibit A, beginning on day one of the quarter. So recall the progressive water rates. So conservative estimate is that each unit uses about 1,200 cubic feet per water per quarter. That amounts to about 224,000 cubic feet. So Pioneer Consulting Group, as a backup, also in that article, stated that the majority of users fall within Tier Three, with some falling seasonally in Tier Two. So on day one, that entire complex has already used 2,500 cubic feet of water and is already in the highest tier. So for the other 89 days of that quarter, that entire complex is using water at the cost of $8.38 per 100 cubic feet. So who loses in this situation? Renters and any residents living in multifamily complexes fed by a single meter, which we've addressed in our meeting two weeks ago, that there are quite a few around town where that is the case, whether they are condominiums or whether they are apartments. So I'd address, you know, call your attention to Exhibit B, where you'll look at tiered usage, so you have an average usage, I've given different numbers for this, where it says single meter per quarter, that is the actual amount that will be billed based on the average usage per unit. If you look in the column where it says individual meters per quarter, that is the amount that would be billed if each individual unit in that complex had a meter. So you look at the differential. What I've marked is differential Q, or the quarterly differential on water rates. If you look at the lowest estimate, the town is collecting an additional $15,870. If you look at a bold estimate, likely not this high, $25,491 per quarter from this complex. If you annualize that, that's $63,480, or $101,965. That's a pretty large amount of money. So why is this important? The renters and residents of multifamily complexes on a single meter rarely, if ever, see the individual bill. They lack information and have no incentive to conserve or to save any water. The excuse that heat and hot water included in the rate simply doesn't pass muster. Anyone with an elementary business education knows that these costs are passed on through rental agreements and through rents. The owner is not going to absorb that additional $15,000 to $25,000 per quarter. The excuse that it's hard to reclaim costs if renters don't pay and leave town fails to account for the fact that the owner or the landlord can be held accountable for each individual meter, if the town implements a polity that dictates so. Now, this also raises the question, what are the aims of progressive water rates? Conservation? By what standard are they deemed effective? Thought makes reason stare on this, because rather than being objective rates based on hard data, the water tiers and pricing seem to only be, be best guesses made in arbitrary manner. So in conclusion, the town has an opportunity to right a wrong here. In my meeting yesterday with the head of DPW, he indicated that in the past, the town did permit developers to pay only a single hookup fee for a multifamily complex, so $6,000 for 187-unit complex. But that in order to treat apartments and single-family homes equally, the policy of a hookup fee for each dwelling was instituted. So that's the $1.12 million figure. So I'm asking the Board to require the same for water rates. I'm not saying that this policy of permitting single meters for multifamily complexes was developed with malicious intent and may have been done unknowingly, but ease, simplicity, and dire financial circumstances on the part of the town should not be used to justify discriminatory policies that adversely affect the less fortunate. So I ask the Board to consider the implications, the impacts, impacts and the externalities of Maynard's water metering policy, and make a change consistent with fairness and objectivity that every resident in this town deserves. and make a change consistent with fairness and objectivity that every resident in this town deserves. And that's the end of my prepared comments.
I would invite you to return when we have our water rate hearings.
Okay.
Which are, what, in December?
Yeah, they're not always annually. We don't anticipate on having a water rate hearing.
Ah, because of.
This year.
Yeah, because of where we're at.
No one intended to raise the rates.
And I thank you for reminding me of the quote, because I still believe that that.
Are we talking about, what are we talking about, a hundred and eighty-seven units?
Uh, one twenty-nine Parker Street Development.
You're talking about, what are you talking about? The seniors, senior?
Nope, the senior living, uh, facility. Um, this is, a one hundred and eighty-seven apartment units is just the apartment buildings and the decision, yeah.
Which, they're putting in separate meters, aren't they?
For the different buildings. Yep, and that was a dis.
One meter for the each building, you're saying?
Correct. So that, that decision was made with the, the developer.
But they're paying hookup fees for each, each.
Correct. Hookup fees for each dwelling unit.
Hookup fee for each apartment, so we're not.
Not in the senior housing.
Not in the senior housing. Senior housing has one hookup fee.
Senior housing is considered, the, the units are not considered dwelling units because they do not have kitchens.
Correct. So we did, we did one hookup fee, uh, per dwelling unit in the apartment building. Um, so a hundred and eighty-seven units, one for the senior living and then one for each of the pads for the, uh, commercial development.
How does that work for Jimmy McDonald's buildings? It's the same thing, one meter for each building?
He has one town meter that feeds the, this specific building and then he sub-meters out individual units. Depends on the building. I can't speak for every building. I don't know the complexity of the older buildings.
So he's got sub-meters for each individual unit?
Some of the buildings.
Yeah, sure.
And then, um, and then they just, the decision to have just the one, one unit, or excuse me, one town meter for each of those buildings was something that was in discussion with the, uh, between the town and the developer while this project was in their, um, kind of negotiations. So, and if the town does encourage when, like new condo associations, where you have individual owners of each condo to have individual meters, so that way we can track. And, you know, the big thing is if, if a user doesn't pay the bill, you know, how is that town made whole for, um, you know, uh, unreceived funds and interest? We're able to, you know, roll that onto property tax if somebody fails to pay the bill for multiple years in a row, um, and accrue the money through, you know, possibly leaning the property if needed. But if it's an apartment building, we, we have no, uh, means of getting that money from, uh, a renter. We can only hold the owner accountable.
Yeah, and in this situation, this was a conversion, so I.
Correct.
I guess during the time, at that time when it was converted, they should have set up separate meetings at the time.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
There's also, yeah. Pretty sure it's common across the United States for water and other things to be included in rent and to suggest that the people that are living in, uh, those units don't understand that if they were paying for their water, the might, the rent might be less, is, is not exactly an accurate statement on your part, at least.
So I would, I would disagree with that.
At least I disagree with your opinion. So it's, you're gonna tell me that everybody that lives in an apartment building doesn't understand that they're getting water, but they don't think they're paying for their water usage? They think it's just, guy's just kicking it in?
So I.
Seriously? You really think that?
I think you're twisting my comments there, sir.
No, your comment was that you don't think, your comment was, let, just tell me if I'm wrong, you, your comment was you don't think that people living there understand that they're getting, that they're paying for water in their rate of what their apartment rent is?
That's not what I'm stating. If you listen to the words that I said, what I indicate.
Read it again.
What I indicated to you.
Read it again. Reread it.
So I'll tell you what I said.
Reread it.
Okay. So I need to look back. The excuse, this is from my notes directly, that heat and water are included simply does not pass muster. Anyone with elementary business education knows these costs are passed on in rental agreements for the higher rates in the highest tier.
Right.
So that you did not understand my comment.
So, so you don't think that the other people that don't have an elementary business education understand that they're paying for their heat in their water in their rate?
That's not what I'm saying.
It sounds like what you're saying.
What I'm saying is they don't understand that they're paying a higher rate for their water than an individual, single-family home is being built on a single meter. If you look at the exhibit, if you look at what I said, that is exactly what I mentioned. You're twisting the words.
I'm not twisting the word.
And you're trying to refute the information that I provided.
I'm just telling you what I heard, and the way I understood your comment.
You heard incorrectly.
Okay, I heard incorrectly. Does anybody, um, have anything else to add on this topic?
Is that, is that a, a question for the general audience or?
No, the general audience is not involved.
The general audience is not involved in the town meeting?
No, the general, the.
It's not, it's not really a town meeting.
Typically, the comments section is public comments at the beginning.
Okay.
Is what my, was what my statement means. You don't understand my statement, you're misconstruing my words.
Okay.
Will there be an opportunity for the audience to, uh, give a little bit of input as well?
Input into?
This particular issue?
Sure. Do you have something you'd like to say?
Sure.
Come up to the microphone, tell us your name and your address and make your comment.
Thank you. Give me a minute. Lauren Bell from Eight Brook Street. You know, I, I, these are friends. I'm not, I'm not here because these are friends, um, because the issue itself, I think, is important enough to warrant some other sort of support. Um, I know they've come before the board a few times. You know, I, I'm trying to put myself in this situation. I, I have a three-bedroom home. Lucky me, right? Um, I have a three-bedroom home. I don't really pay much attention to my water and sewer rates. I pay it when it comes. When it, I notice it jumping up, I figure, okay, that's, that's because prices are going up or whatever. But if, uh, the tiered rates had doubled my, effectively in terms of the rate, had doubled my three-bedroom home to a six-bedroom home, or if I had quadrupled it to a twenty-four-bedroom home tier, all of a sudden, you can bet that I would be here offering the same, uh, feedback to the board because there's no other recourse. I mean, this is a separate issue, obviously, from the, uh, previous, um, you know, HOA presidents who shirk their duties. This is not a, a derelict couple coming here, uh, and they are, in fact, speaking on behalf of an entire community of people in this building. Uh, and, and, you know, you, we can trump this, you know, chalk this all up to, you know, whining about things that aren't fair. But this is kind of beyond the pale when it comes to fair and unfair. I'm a resident of this community, of every resident in this community, at least the ones that I know and associate with are good people. Uh, and they have come before you multiple times in ultimate humility, asking you to reexamine this issue and make whatever changes are necessary so that their two-bedroom apartment isn't treated like a twenty-bedroom apartment or whatever it's being treated like in the tiered system. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm an outsider. This is not affecting me. My three-bedroom home, I assume, is somewhere still in the three-bedroom range when it comes to the tiered system and isn't a twelve or twenty-bedroom home. Uh, but, um, uh, I will be back and I will certainly, uh, advocate, uh, for everyone else who lives in this town and are good and decent people and want fair and decent, uh, tiered water rates and approve that, uh, to advocate on behalf of these folks and any other building, uh, where, uh, people are being disproportionately affected by the new system. Um, and I would urge you to do the same because, uh, while this particular issue may go away, while, uh, Eric and Ariana may at some point move out of Maynard, uh, and while the poor folks in their building, uh, may not come before you, this issue will come up again. We have two, I mean, we have more than eighty million dollars in development, uh, in this town going on right now. Uh, and we have a lot of old buildings that are, uh, either crumbling or defunct, uh, and, and the issue's gonna come up again. So I, I just urge you to please at least, uh, do more than just mulch the silver as another complaint coming before you. It's, it's a pretty serious issue and, and I think it is a, it is a town issue, uh, and a board issue. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody up here, anywhere else?
You know, from my perspective, I could understand the argument that, you know, they're making, but at the same time, I, I think if they took it upon themselves to install separate meters, I don't think that they would have had this issue.
If I can respond to that, I agree with the board's decision that for our individual condominium association, perhaps we should have looked into that before we purchased the place. When you have renters buying into an apartment complex that they are not aware of, so we're looking, this is a town issue that I'm discussing and it's not for our individual situation. I also want to say that we're moving, um, next year. I'm in the U.S. Air Force. I, I have a, a change of assignment. I'm moving soon. I'm not gaining anything, anything from this because any potential change in policy will not affect me. Uh, this is something, this is a, a wrong that I see and I think the board has an opportunity to make it right.
Thank you for serving, by the way.
Who's taking your place when you go? And I don't, and I say that because, you know, David, David has, um, invited whoever it may be to the, you know, the rate hearing to discuss it, and clearly it, it warrants a discussion. There's two separate issues. There's, there's the abatement and there's the tiered structure.
Which is what I was, yeah.
Tiered structure is a totally separate issue and, and understandable that there's more concern about that going forward. The, 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 um, interest in, in the abatements and those things are really, um, I think you know how most of us feel about that.
Yep. And I, I understand the board's decision of that.
In that, that was a conscious decision that a group of people made. As far as the tiers go and all that, you know, it's, you know, there's a lot of questions that, that come around that and certainly if there was, if there ends up being a, um, an unfair burden placed on a certain group of people, that's unintentional always, or, and, and hopefully can be rectified appropriately, but.
I certainly expressed some concern about that last year.
You know, there should be, hopefully, it looks like Lauren's gonna have to come.
As you quoted me.
You have to draft Lauren to come next, next time, you know, because it is, it is an important issue and, you know, it's something to, to discuss. But as far as the, the abatement issue goes, I'm not so sure that, you know, it's our responsibility to wrong, or right or wrong, that, you know, somebody got the money.
It was, it was worth an appeal to the town.
Somebody, somebody, somebody collected the money from the people in the building.
It was, and what I came here.
Second conscious decision to not pay everybody.
And I agree. It was worth an, an appeal to come to the town. Uh, but in our meeting two weeks ago, uh, with a better understanding of, of the water metering policy and the rates, um, that was an item that, uh, I grew concerned about and I wanted to bring that to the, to the attention of the board.
Can you send at least some of us, I know you have my email address, can you send me your comments?
Absolutely.
Send me your comments, email me. Email me your comments. I'll share them with everyone else here on the board and, um, I'll, I'll send them to Aaron.
They probably should become part of the record of the meeting.
Yeah.
So if there's a copy, give them to Becky.
I can forward that. What I, I don't have a soft copy with me here, but I can, so, so you don't have to type it out, I can send it.
Okay, and can you also just let us know how we end up with the, um, second issue, which is that, that DPW take a look to see how we can help, if we can help relieve.
Absolutely, yeah, we can. I mean, I've, I've spoken with Aaron, um, and we, we could set up a time. I don't disagree with that.
All right. And then move.
When can we expect to hear more about this?
What, which, which this?
Well, there's two different, there's two different parts.
Abatement this or the next this?
The bigger issue.
The bigger issue?
Yeah.
I don't know. Um, we've got a couple pressing issues on the table right now, but, um, we don't have a, a water issue.
Yeah, can you define bigger issue, I guess?
Huh?
The issue affected me more than the two of us.
So.
So this is the issue of a tiered rates?
The metering and the tiered rates.
And then the, the rates that, that cause tenants in apartment buildings on a single meter to pay more.
Right. So I guess my comments on that is that the town has had a tiered system for many years. When we had the rate increase last year, it was a tiered system prior to that as well. We did, um, the tiered system on the sewer side is new. It was a single rate before. Uh, we moved that to a tiered system. As far as the meters, uh, we do have a system in place. Uh, a property can split a meter. Um, somebody that owns a two-family house, if they want to put a second meter in it, because they want to rep both sides and, and charge each renter individually, they can split the meter. Um, that's something that's been recommended in this case. Um, and, you know, I, I know that you stated that due to the, the plumbing configuration, the building, it makes it relatively, are very difficult, right? And that's why I've offered to send somebody over there to take a look, um, and see if we can offer some other suggestions if individual condos wanted to split their meters. That's an option. So we do have that out there. Um, a lot of properties in town take, um, take that option. They split their meters all the time. Um, there's a fee associated with that. There's an inspection and there's a process for that.
Yep.
Um, so we do have that.
So I.
And we do encourage individual property owners to have individual meters, right? It's when you have an apartment building where there's one owner and it's one building and one person that's responsible and accountable for that account, that's when we have the one meter, because again, even if they had multiple meters, that's, that's their choice. Um, and usually that's a decision that's made in the development.
So I, I would disagree that the town makes that the developer's choice and that, that's what leads to the discriminatory rates. So if the town required that each individual apartment have an individual meter, then that would totally wipe out this issue. I don't know about a retroactive solution, but in the future, that's, that's the issue that I'm, that I'm raising here is. It's, the town can easily make a policy where that is not the developer's choice, where the developer doesn't have to pass or it's save money by not installing multiple meters and then pass additional costs on the water rates onto the tenants. Who will not see the bill?
I don't disagree with, with that statement, that the town could make that a policy. We don't have that as a policy today, so it's, it's a discussion.
Okay. Put it on a, put it on an agenda.
Yeah, we should.
Pretty soon.
That's.
Doesn't that go back to the question of, um, the renter that we can't lean them if they don't pay the bill?
So, yeah, but, right, so, so that's, that's, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of different things that go into it, but.
I mean, the first thing we have to think, look at, look at the policies.
I guess, you know.
I, I guess, I guess my, my suggestion, right, and in an upcoming meeting, we're gonna have the water and sewer, uh, rules and regulations. I'll be presenting those to the board for review. Updates to the current rules and regulations and new current rules and regulations for sewer. So I can draft something up, um, in some language as part of that and we can discuss that at that point if, if the board feels that's appropriate.
We're using, we're not using, um, Toby, Toby's company.
We're not using water and current any longer.
Oh, we use Pioneer.
So, I mean, we, you know, have Pioneer, uh, doing analysis of it, you know.
Do that, yeah.
If we make certain changes and see where that goes as far as how it affects all parties involved. You know, you know, we'll put, make that as part of the discussion.
I'll reach out to Pioneer.
And just let us know how we, um, let us know how we end up after you get out there and take a look about the, the change in the metering in, in that building and then on the next, the next meeting, can you put, um, Becky the right, you know, emotion with the right language as to appeal or deny or grant the abatement? So we have a, a motion for that? And then I'll be done. Quick. All right, so we'll get them to take a look at it.
Thank you.
We continue to that, yep, thanks. All right. Andrew, so we're up to the special town meeting discussion?
So, um, I think the board's aware we received a citizen's petition.
Well, I do have to stop you at that one, Andrew, because we were not aware, I wasn't aware. So we were not informed about it until I saw it on the agenda. So once I saw it on the agenda, we realized there was a petition submitted. So why wasn't it that we, we were not actually told from you, you that we have a petition submitted? We didn't hear it. I didn't hear it.
The petition was received last week. By the time the signatures were certified, the board packet was presented to you. You actually had the information.
Yeah, but the board.
A few hours before the rest of the public knew about it.
Do you think though, Andrew, the most important issue that we've been discussing over the last several months, and a petition is submitted to the town and the Board of Selectmen is not notified that a, that a citizen's petition has been submitted? Do, uh, do you see that there might be a, this lack of communication there and then not to hear about it until after?
Yeah, at least we should have just said, you should have said, "They're submitted." It didn't have to be, you know.
I was asked about it on the street, not knowing that it had been submitted. What's going on with it? I don't even know it's been submitted. And I waited until I heard because I wanted to see what the reaction at Town Hall was and apparently you didn't care, you didn't bother to tell the Board of Selectmen.
We've got it Friday. We've got it Friday with a.
It was submitted on Monday.
But what was it submitted, Chris?
I honestly apologize if, if the board is offended by this, but there was nothing to tell the board until we had it certified. If the petition was out of order, there would have been nothing to tell you, other than that the petition was out of order. You were notified when it was confirmed that it was a valid petition.
In the future, in the future, I would like to know when the petition that's submitted has to be we supposed to know.
Any petition submitted under our charter is not subject to review by council.
That's not accurate.
Any citizen's petition.
That's not accurate.
If you want to bring up the charter and read it, then fine, but I think you're, you're misrepresenting the charter. I think it's unfair to. I think it's unfair to the voters to submit it to Town Council, et cetera, but that's okay.
Apologize for not communicating more quickly to the board. However, the petition is valid, it is not out of order, and had it been out of order, David, it would not have been because of Town Council, it would have been because the signatures were not certified, which is what I said, we certified it on Friday morning, that was because of the signatures. Presenting it to Town Council is an entirely different issue, and you're absolutely right, citizen's petitions do not need to be validated by Town Council. That doesn't mean that they, the community does not have an interest in determining legality of a citizen's petition and its ramifications to the rest of the community. That was why it was sent to Town Council. So I apologize for not informing the community on Monday, the 24th, when it was first received, or the Selectmen. That's an oversight on my part, but the rest of the actions are absolutely important and were handled correctly.
We're not questioning that was the latter.
It sounds exactly like what's being said.
My question, whether or not it needed to go to council, that's for sure.
Town Council has every right to look at documents that come before the community, that's what they're here for.
Okay. So...
So where do we go with this?
Set a date, if they, so, I don't know who was in the room at the very beginning of the meeting.
With the statement...
I gotta look at my phone so I can give the exact time of both the email and the phone call, so everybody doesn't think that we're hiding information and being sneaky. At 5:26, I received an email from Mr. Joel Kahn, who represents a developer at Powder Mill Road. 5:24 PM, "Chris, can you call me on my cell? I want to discuss with you some changes in our approach in the action taken by the Acton Board of Selectmen at last night's meeting." Thank you. Joel. P.S., I couldn't find your number. So, I called Joel back at, let's see, I called him back at 5:35. And at 5:35 this evening, Joel Kahn, who represents Powder Mill Place, or what we're calling Powder Mill Place, informed me that the Acton Board of Selectmen at last night's Selectmen's meeting, and there's a bunch of technical stuff that I'm not aware of and sewage language that I really don't care about, informed me that the town of Acton and the developer have reached an agreement in principle under which the town of Acton will provide sewage to that project for the Acton piece of the project. And they will also provide water to that project for the Acton piece of the project, which means that if the project goes forward, Maynard would be responsible for the Maynard portion sewer only and the Maynard water only. And that was a conversation that I had with them last night, actually today, 5:30 this afternoon, 5:35 this afternoon. And that's all I know, I don't know what the vote in Acton was, I know that he said that the Acton Board of Selectmen approved it, he had left a message for Greg Johnson who was, you know, out on maternity leave, and actually when I walked in the door this evening for the executive session, he was actually calling Andrew to give Andrew the same information. So that all took place between 5:30 and say 6:15. So that's what I know right now, we are no longer being asked to provide sewer to Acton on this project, so we move forward. And the citizen's petition still needs to be scheduled, if anybody decides that they want to withdraw their petition, they may. If they decide they don't want to withdraw, it goes forward.
I would think that the citizen's petition, which said nothing about Powder Mill Place, it has to do with the policy of the town relative to selling sewer to out of town.
I understand, Dave, save the votes for somebody else because I really don't care about it, it's absolutely positive.
You don't care about this?
No, it's absolutely positive, 100% aimed at Powder Mill Place and nowhere else.
That's absolutely untrue.
For the purposes of the discussion. Okay, thank you. Does anybody want to set the meeting, the meeting date?
Mr. Chairman, the town clerk has requested that the meeting be scheduled for a specific date because of early voting, it's gonna tie up her activities in the last two weeks of October and through the general election on November 6th. The charter requires us to schedule this meeting between 21 days and 45 days after receipt, which was Monday, the 24th, and that puts it right in the middle of all that time. So she's suggesting and requesting that it be scheduled for November 8th, which would be after the general election.
And is that within the 45-day requirement?
It is the 45th day.
Make a motion that we move to hold a special town meeting to consider the citizen's petition to be held on November 8th at 7 o'clock.
Second.
Please.
What?
The place you want to know.
More than likely it's gonna be at the Fowler School, but it will be posted. Prior to, you know, posting, we will have a location.
I don't know.
This email came today and this is, you know, I'm not sure exactly where it's gonna be, but more than likely the Fowler School.
See, that was gonna be my question, is can we vote on it and then do we have to re-vote if it's a different place?
I believe we have to name the location at the time that we...
I'm naming it Fowler School. So tell Fowler, tell Fowler School we're coming.
To see if it's available.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
November 8th, 7 PM, Fowler Middle School.
Thursday, November 8th.
Thursday, Thursday, November 8th. Any other discussion?
This is not a discussion about the town meeting, but...
This is a discussion only about the time and place.
Okay, all right.
Warrants of the, you know, the petition itself seems on its own and that's to be discussed at special town meeting.
Is a, I'm just curious, if somebody else wanted to add to that warrant, are they allowed to by law?
They're not.
They're not?
Citizen's petition for a town meeting is for that topic and that topic only.
Yep.
Other warrant articles, in fact, we have a citizen's petition for a warrant article cannot be added to this.
Correct, okay, fine.
It is specifically for the purpose the citizen's petition requested.
Okay. All those in favor?
So, Chris, I'm the chairman, I should say.
Yes, sir.
For clarification purposes, Mr. Kahn's text to you or email to you, is that something that has to be submitted now to the town for public records?
Well, it came to my personal email address, but I'd be really happy to share it with anybody that wants to see it.
No, no, I'm just saying, is that something that he's gonna be submitting so we know?
Submit it? What do you want, what do you ask?
No, no, I'm just asking whether or not from his perspective, we don't, we know exactly what he's gonna say and his, because now he's gonna have two lips, basically.
Well, the lip becomes, the lip becomes invalid because part of the lip includes...
Oh, I got you, got you, so he's gonna have to do two separate lips now.
You know what I asked, I asked that question, I asked, I asked the question, how does that change the lip?
Right.
His suggestion is that it doesn't, except that, you know, that language will obviously be taken out. That language will change, I don't, you know, so, he hasn't, since he hasn't, I don't know what he's gonna do with it, that's not, you know, that's, he's gonna deal with that, so, you know, that's the date, November 8th, 7 o'clock, Fowler School. Now we're onto the next one, which is the discussion about Powder Mill Place, which I think we can table for the, table for...
Can I pause one second? Who made the second on that?
David.
David.
Thank you.
If he didn't, he did now.
Thank you.
So anyway, as far as the Powder Mill discussion, I don't think we need to have one tonight because we have to find out what changes. Obviously, the, any potential memorandum of agreement or understanding is gonna be all new, any mitigations are gonna be all new, all that type of stuff has to be revisited, so we really don't need to discuss that unless anybody really wants to...
We need new binders.
Yeah, we need a lot of stuff. Anyway, that's where he is with it.
Sorry.
You know, I didn't, he didn't, it all happened last night, but he'll provide us more information. If you want, I guess we can have him come in and explain this to us at our next meeting? We could request it.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good idea.
We can request it, Mr. Joel, come in and chit chat with us and, you know, so could we invite him for the 16th, please?
Would you like Adam Costa to attend if he's available?
Pardon?
Would you like Attorney Costa to attend if available?
Sure.
Sure.
All right, we have a party, we have everybody. Yes, sir. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question if I may relate to this. Since the prospective developer had not submitted any concrete plans for this whole project, why, as I understand it according to protocol, why was it that his engineering firm was allowed to put cameras into our sewer system prior to any submission of a plan? It's not really the way it's done.
Our engineer did the videography, he nearly paid for it.
It doesn't make any difference who paid for it, Mr. Chairman, it's the way it works.
It's our, our engineer, at our request, the engineer scoped the pipes from...
Okay, you requested it way back in July, I don't know.
We requested that when it went like probably July, when we started, July, or two, three, right? So sometime around July last year, we requested that our company that we use called Wayne's Drains, who's done all the drain scoping and sound for several years, do the work, so they did the work and he paid the bill.
But the developer had submitted no concrete plans because he could, he could've just dropped the project when he found out that there was gonna be some resistance.
Which is why we had him pay the bills. Town of Maynard hasn't paid, Town of Maynard hasn't paid anything yet, there's been traffic studies, there's been financial impact studies, there's been a sewer study, there's been several studies that have taken place behind this thing without anything being done, which is typical for any big project like this. And all he, and he has paid all of us, so we haven't expended a dime and all the expense for all these studies and, you know, look-ins and everything have been at his expense for that very reason, because we don't have anything in front of us.
I'm fully aware of that, I was just wondering, just wondering, since the board, you as the chair of Public Works requested that they do it, that's a kind of a different color. Normally, unless a developer puts forth a solid plan, they're not allowed to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So, does anybody have any objections to putting that off until the 16th and having, having him come in and converse with us about what the next steps are in his opinion?
No, my only request would be if we could put it a little bit after the beginning of the meeting, I have to be in Connecticut at 2 o'clock that day for a meeting and I expect I might be a little late getting back, so...
We'll request that he appear at 8 PM.
That's fine.
How's that?
On the 16th?
16th to 8 PM, we'll ask Joel to come join us. Give you time to get back?
Yeah, 20, I expect I'll be out there. I'm down there near Yukon, so it's what, an hour and a half?
Yeah, an hour and a half. That time of night may be a little longer. All right, so we have the town minister's report, does anybody have any questions about the town minister's report?
I have the ADA grant.
Yes.
It says it's been submitted with requests of totaling...
Sorry, it wasn't actually finalized when I, when I wrote that report, $52,000 was the application for this year. Those were things that we could identify that could be put into the grant.
And when do we expect to hear? When do they decide those?
December, early December, they do the awarding.
Okay, okay. Anything else? So we have an odd, we have an odd item tonight in the agenda, it came from the town clerk and she has asked us to make a motion and vote on a motion this evening that would designate Town Hall as a early voting spot for the November 6, 2018 state election, and it suggests, and the motion suggests that we move to accept and approve early voting in the town of Maynard for the November 6, 2018 state election. Early voting will commence on October 22nd and run through November 2nd, 2018 during Town Hall regular business hours. The town clerk will be holding additional hours on Saturday, October 27th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. The Michael J.G. notice room 2001 is to be designated as the early voting location. You have a second?
Second, I do have a couple of questions. Can you repeat the dates that the...
The early voting will commence on October 22nd.
Yep.
And will run through November 2nd.
Right.
And also, also Saturday, October 27th from 2, 9 to 12, sorry, 9 to 12. Do we have, excuse me, do we have a, we don't have a meeting during that time here, right?
We do not.
No.
Okay, so that's, we don't have to move us.
My understanding is...
Okay, yeah, okay.
My understanding is that early voting last time was wildly successful, so I think it's great, but I'm wondering, is there a reason why she didn't want to use the same room we used the last time?
Two significant reasons, one is it's not big enough for wildly successful, and secondly, that room has become the most reserved room in the building because of its size, you know, it's the right size, the finance conference room. It's the most popular conference room because it meets the needs of most conference meetings and she can't go downstairs and also run her office up here. You know, she's got a three-quarter time assistant, so it's, having here makes sense.
Does this door lock?
No, it won't be locked, in fact, it'll be open because the break room and so on, but the voting will be taking up most of this part of the room.
So my second question is, because the state accepted, what's the, what's the guideline? Does the community have to, each voting year or each election have to establish vote, open, you know, early voting times, or is it, each community has their own?
That's right, the first time we did it a year ago, the rules were a little bit flexible, communities could choose kind of with a minimum. We reached and got accommodation from Secretary Galvin because we reached the silver status for the number of hours we offered it. And I don't know if they've changed the rules and regs, but they are encouraging more of this instead of less to increase turnout.
Okay. Here's a question.
The only thing that that hamper is, and this is just an editorial comment, the only thing that hamper is is the October surprise is now gonna become the earlier October surprise in elections because of early voting throughout the country. I mean, people are voting already in the midterm elections throughout the country and, you know, typically that October surprise issue comes up in late October, so now they're gonna have to start strategizing to have it come up in late September.
That'd be September.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so anybody, any other questions about the early voting? We do have to vote, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to vote, we haven't voted yet.
I thought you were moving on.
No, I'm getting to moving on soon, but I haven't moved on yet.
Sorry.
So, all right, so, everybody, any other questions about the early voting? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so, now we're onto Chairman's issues, Chairman's goals and issues. Do we have our goals meeting the 10th?
11.
11th? Okay, that's Thursday, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Next Thursday.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
Okay, all right, so I just have a couple quick things. One was to thank and congratulate all the organizations, the individuals and the volunteers who made the Maynard Fest Saturday such a great success and obviously thank somebody else for the great weather we had. There's a lot of people, it's nice to not be soaking wet out there, especially for you guys that sit up in the morning. A lot of people, every politician, every politician between here and wherever, we're walking around stomping all over Maynard, shaking hands, so they're all looking for votes.
Saturday.
On November 8th, but, so thanks to them, and then also thank you to the Maynard Police and Fire Relief Associations for their organization of the carnival as well this past weekend. And one other thank you should go out to Greg Hill and his Battle Road Brewery, for they were, they donated the fireworks display that we, some, most people, some people got to enjoy that night, and they also provided the food, beer and other activities that made up Oktoberfest, so thanks to all those people involved in those three different things. It was a nice Saturday. So, that's it for my report. Then we have reports from you guys, Armin?
Yeah, I'd like to echo your sentiments, I think it was a fantastic weekend, we should all be proud, Maynard put on a great display, I think it was, the weekend itself, the weather helped. I had the opportunity to also go to the art space and take a, take a look around and walk around there, that was really well attended also, and walked around Saturday during the Maynard Fest. And the past week, I also had the opportunity to attend the Economic Development Committee meeting and it seems like that group is really doing a great job of moving some of their projects forward and it's exciting to see some of the, some of the work that's being done on that committee. And I also had the opportunity for the first time to attend the session with Attorney Lisa Me to understand how open meeting works and I was very enlightened. And I was very enlightened, so it's a different, I guess it's a different way of looking at things. So, thank you.
Okay. David?
Yeah, obviously, same comments about Maynard Fest. I'll leave the summary of the Budget Subcommittee to Justine, unless you don't want to talk about it. And lastly, I have heard some comments and concerns, and I don't know if there's anything, probably not anything that we can do about it. But specifically, from the high school students and members of the band in WAVM, and their concern about the Christmas parade having been moved to the Saturday night of the WAVM telethon. And there is actual talk among the, basically, they're saying that they probably will not participate in the Christmas parade as a result of it. And, you know, I don't know why it was moved, but it's somewhat disappointing, since it is a community event, that our town, our high school band may not be able to participate, because it conflicts with another huge and very, very important community event. So, perhaps in the future, we can make it so that it does work. But for right now, the word is that if they have a band marching, it's going to be a very limited number of students.
If I can share a comment, I talked to Chief Stowers about that. And Chief Stowers said, Becky, to be extremely honest, the firefighters and the police officers that are working to put the parade together, they're volunteers too.
Yep.
And in order for them to hire the different pieces for the parade, that date worked out for hiring those particular things. So, the things that they have to hire to put into the parade, which is costly. It's about $25,000 to $30,000 worth of hired activities in the parade.
I know. It's a Herculean, it's a Herculean event.
It's a lot of volunteers that are giving free time.
We've known that for years. When the other group used to do it, they'd start the day after the parade ended, the previous year.
Same goes with, WAVM doesn't tell us when they're having their telethon, so it couldn't have...
It's always the same, for the calendar, it's always the same week, so...
But it's not shared with us here, so we couldn't have cast it along to the fire.
Yeah. I think it's always the second Saturday, the second weekend in December. And the parade has historically always been the last or the first, the first Saturday after Thanksgiving. First Sunday after Thanksgiving.
It's always the first Sunday in December.
Yep.
Parade's always been the first Sunday in December.
Right.
So, I don't know.
So...
Hopefully, you can figure something out. It's an evening event, isn't it?
Yeah, but the telethon ends at...
It'll be until Sunday morning, right?
Telethon ends Sunday morning.
Yeah. They'll be doing bidding and everything on the Saturday night.
What's that?
They'll be doing bidding and everything Saturday night, you know, but yeah.
Okay. Anything else, David? Anything else?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Justine?
So, I guess I'll do a quick summary of the Budget Subcommittee meeting. We met Monday last night. It's been a long week already. It was good. I think that we, you know, we're really working at, you know, really kind of getting into the nitty-gritty of what the town budget and the school budget look like together. I think that everybody has the same goal in mind, which is to kind of have a very cohesive process moving forward, so that when, when a budget message does come out, it's reflective of pretty much all of Maynard's values. And we're trying to do the best we can with keeping the resident, the departments, the schools, the kids, everybody in mind, moving forward. So, we have another meeting on the 17th. We all each have some homework to do before then, and we're moving forward.
We actually met twice since the last time we met here.
Oh, we have. Sorry.
Why do you guys seem so tired?
I, just, one other comment that I would make is that the group that we have is really good in that, you know, we're honest and open, and there's a learning process going on among all of us, not only about the schools' needs and desires, but some of their long-term goals and everything else. So, it's been a very, very good opportunity to hear that. And, you know, and I think, Justine, you can say if you disagree, but I think the schools understand, the school department understands where our concerns are. And I think we're beginning to understand where their concerns are on short-term as well as long-term goals. So, that's a good thing.
Yeah. There's challenges on both sides, and it's interesting to see, you know, when you come together and have these conversations, you really learn, you know, what you can cut, what you can't cut, what there's reasons for things. And so, it is definitely a very heavy learning curve. But I appreciate that everybody's willing to have the open conversations needed to move everything forward, so.
So, for the 11th, I'll send out, from the club, I'll send out their menu. And they have, so they have two menus. They have a catering menu, which they can give us, you know, like, the same thing, like a tray of something or salads or whatever. And then, they have a menu they order off, which is basically a pub menu. So, I'll send copies of both of those, and we can just kind of decide amongst ourselves, do we want to order off the menu, or do you want them to just prepare something to have it ready for us? So, anybody have any preference?
Order off the menu, if we know what the menu is.
The menu is, hamburgers...
That's fine.
Sandwiches and stuff. Sandwiches, fries, chicken fingers, fries, everything with fries.
Send the menu out. We can order off.
I'll send it out. Okay. So, that's the 11th, 6 o'clock. And the next regular meeting is the 16th here. That's it. So, make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? See you all next week.
Thank you.
Next Thursday, indeed.